Welcome, everybody, to the October 8th Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Chair Dennis Washburn, and I'm going to read the reason that we can meet virtually, as almost all of us are doing these days. This meeting is being conducted under utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with Governor Newsom's Executive Order N 2920 regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on the city's CTV channel afterwards. Right now, if you're participating via Zoom or Internet, it's my understanding that you're able to join us. And I will just announce to everybody that we've agreed that this evening, we will have a speaker limit of three minutes unless there is need to change that order of the day. So I've called the meeting to order, and all the commissioners are present except Commissioner Secan, who has an excuse, the absence today. I hope he's having more fun than we are. Can I ask Michael to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure.
And I don't think we need to stand, just hand over heart, and the flag is there.
Okay, and I understand it comes out a little uneven. The Zoom doesn't, isn't simultaneous for everybody, but anyway, hand over heart, ready, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And if there are no changes or additions to the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? So move. I heard Wendy, move, and who was second?
I'll second it, Dennis.
Okay, Peter, that's just for the record. And hearing no objections, then we'll proceed on this agenda as we have it in front of us and as the folks can see on the website. And I guess, are there other ways that folks, you know, can actually see the agenda this evening? Technically speaking?
The agenda itself is also on the city's website and would have been posted at City Hall and at two or three other locations around town.
But if you're interested and you're listening, folks, and you haven't seen it yet, you can go to the CTV portion. Pardon?
Go to the calendar, click on the Planning Commission on the city calendar, and when you click on that, you'll also receive a copy of the agenda with all of the staff correspondence files, PowerPoint.
Outstanding, thank you very much. Are there any announcements or introductions that commissioners or staff actually has to let us know about? Anything? I will say sadly, there isn't a pumpkin festival, but I would hope that perhaps in the future, we might look at the broader and almost historic programming we had when we started the city, we called it Calabasas Day. So if we had, you know, a parade or bands playing or businesses celebrating or whatever else, there was at least an opportunity to celebrate Halloween and the season and Harvest Festival. Even though I will tell folks that they shouldn't expect that there is going to be a pumpkin festival in Calabasas this year for all the obvious reasons. There is, however, a fun thing to do if you want to look at the internet, look at Knights of the Jack. That's at Gillette Ranch, and it's a drive-through experience this year. So take a look if you're interested in having an outing and enjoying the spooky season. That's all I have, anything else from anyone? Okay, then I can ask if there is any oral communications or public comment that's been indicated by any of the viewers? Brenda, is there anything that you see, or Judy?
I see one hand up, Norma Sitron.
Let's find out if it's for items not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, why items, you know, one, two, three, or four and five, wait until that portion. But if it's a public comment on an item not on the agenda, by all means, please take three minutes to address the commission.
Okay, let's check. Norma, please unmute yourself, and you will be able to speak. Go ahead.
It's an item not on the agenda. I'm Norma Sitron, and I'm a resident of Calabasas. Good evening, Chairman Washburn, Commissioners Harrison, Kraut, Fosberg, and Mueller. My comments tonight are not meant to be adversarial. I want to honor the process we have in place, but I also want to suggest it's time now for changes to be considered. I believe you all received our letter this morning regarding the Rondell Project. I'm not going to reiterate in detail. My purpose here tonight is to have our letter acknowledged. In addition, I just found out yesterday that the LVMWD denied a portico, there's a French name for the portico that I can't pronounce, but it's shown and then deleted in a recent unpublished rendering. I did a search of the MND seeking that it was something that had occurred there, and of the 17 mentions of the LVMD, I didn't find any mention of a denial. So I'm assuming that it's recent, and I would like to just pose rhetorically, when did the, when did the denial take place and why? It's my belief that the Planning Commission should be notified of any denial for any part of any project so that future planning would consider the reason for that denial. I also believe all denial notifications should take place at an open commission meeting. Transparency is the key. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for bringing that information to our attention, and I'm sure staff will take it into consideration. And if there is any legal requirement, then that will be dealt with at a future meeting, I'm sure. At this point, hearing no other, we're seeing no other hands for public comment or oral communications. We'll move to the consent items, all right with everybody? Okay, the consent items are approval of the minutes of the meetings of the Planning Commission on August 20th and September 10th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting of August 20th? Michael?
On both of them, Cantor is spelled, it should be changed, it should be K-A-N-T-E-R, the person's last name would be Mark Cantor.
That's one of the applicants on one of the projects, yes?
Right.
Thank you for the catch. Anything else? John, you're still looking, anything?
No, nothing else.
Okay, kind of a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 20th.
So move.
I heard John first, and then Michael second, all right?
Fine.
And I'm hearing no objection, then we'll have those minutes approved as corrected with a spelling proper. Next meeting was September 10th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of September 10th?
Well, just the same thing.
Okay, so we'll make those changes, anything else from any of the other commissioners or staff? Then a motion to approve the minutes of September 10th meeting?
So move.
Michael, second from?
Second.
Wendy beat you to it, John.
Fine.
Wendy, second, and hearing no objection, the minutes are approved as corrected. I hear no objection, so that's the order of the day. All right. Next item of business is our public hearing. On item number two, which is continued from the September 10th, that's the file number regarding a site plan review, number 2019002 and variance, number 2019002, request for a site plan review and variance to demolish an existing legal non-conforming 1772 square foot, two-story, single-family residence and construct a new 3660 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. And it has a number of conditions that they're on the agenda, if anyone wants that detail. May we have a staff report?
Evening, Chair Washburn and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you, as Mr. Chair just explained, is a request for a site plan review and variance to demolish an existing legal non-conforming 1,772 square foot, two-story, single-family residence and construct a new 3,660 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with an attached 424 square foot, two-car garage and 61 square foot storage area. The project involves requests for four variances to exceed the maximum permitted site coverage, encroach into both required side yard setbacks and encroach into the required rear yard setback. The subject site is located at 4602 Park Marisol within the residential, single-family zoning district. Applications for the proposed project were reviewed by the Planning Commission both on August 20th and September 10th. At the September 10th Planning Commission meeting, following discussion on the project, a majority of the Planning Commission verbally agreed that the rear yard variance request cannot be supported. However, in lieu of a vote that would inevitably deny the project on September 10th, the Commission instead inquired whether the property owner would consider redesigning the single-family residence to meet the rear yard setback. Because the property owner had to leave the meeting early and the project architect non-answer on the property owner's behalf, the item was continued today. And the Commission further recommended that staff reach out to the property owner for an answer. Since the meeting, the property owner has communicated that he does not intend to redesign the single-family residence to meet their required rear yard setback. To this end, it is appropriate that the Commission take formal action on the project. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
May I ask a question about the status of the resolution? Has it changed from the matter as we dealt with it at the September 10th meeting?
No, the only thing that has been added are the recitals because it's a continued item, but the context of the resolution is the same.
Okay. At this point, I will open the public hearing because that's what we have on the books. And Matt, I would just ask a question. What's the, I guess, the most appropriate way to proceed on this, given that you heard the recitals have been added and the discussion has been had, and the applicant has decided not to redesign the structure? Want to make sure that we treat everybody fairly here. It is a public hearing, correct? And we need to hear if there's anyone who wishes to speak on the matter.
Yes, my recommendation would be to take the following steps. Receive any public comment of anyone who wishes to speak in the public hearing, then close the public hearing and debate among the commission. And if the situation is as it was before, the commission might consider approving the resolution, denies the project because the commission might, in that case, find that the rear yard variance setback cannot be made. I note that there was discussion as well with the last public hearing about the side yard setback on one of the two sides, I forget which cardinal direction. And staff's recommendation would be to confine the denial at this stage, just the rear yard setback, as that would be sufficient to move forward, should the commission so concur with staff, and would allow the project to, the final decision to be made tonight rather than requiring further continuance to rewrite the resolution to add additional findings denying the other variants. And as noted, the primary question that was before the commission at the end of the last hearing was whether or not the applicant was willing to redesign to remove the roughly 22 square feet in the rear corner in order to eliminate the need for the rear yard variance setback. The applicant was posed that question, and I expect we'll get their answer this evening. Their answer to date to staff has been that they're not willing to redesign, and that would be the primary question for the public hearing, should the applicant so wish to answer that question. Thank you.
And it's my understanding the staff recommendation is to deny on the basis of the inability to meet that variance requirement or findings, and without prejudice, which means, now you might want to explain that as well, but my understanding that means is that we're not taking any action.
Well, it would be action to deny the project. As requested, they would not be allowed to build the house as they've designed it. However, because the recommendation is denied without prejudice, it would not prohibit them from applying tomorrow to redesign the project in another way, whether to redesign it as had been recommended, to delete the 22 square feet issue, or some other conforming design that meets very, that meets the required standard. It doesn't block an application, as opposed to denial with prejudice. Under our code, the same application can't be applied for within a year. This, as staff's recommendation, should the commission incur is to not stop anything for a year, but rather to allow the applicant to reapply with another project, but it would be final action to deny, that would be staff's recommendation. If the commission incurs, subject, of course, to appeal to the city council, which is allowed by any agreed party, including the applicant, if the required fee is paid and the required appeal form is filed within, I believe it's 10 days.
Thank you for the explanation, and are there any questions or comments from commissioners before I open the public hearing to the applicant and or anyone else who wishes to speak to the commission?
Mr. Chair, actually, before we do that, if, I'd like to mention, there was a question that came up regarding 4615 Park Marisol regarding the square footage on why it was different on the COLO records and the assessor records. There is a, there is a difference there, but we don't know exactly what was reported to the assessor's office as what we have on record is less. It does look like there was probably a miscount of maybe dead space or attic space, but we're not entirely sure why the assessors has different information. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, that'll come up, I'm sure, then, under the discussion of the commissioners as we deal with the matter going forward. Then I would see if anyone wishes to speak to the commission at this point. Applicants would have first priority, so I know, is Mr. Cantor with us this evening?
I see applicant Janet Spinks with us, her hand is not raised, and I do not see Mark Cantor. So if Janet would like to speak, just raise your hand, and I'll allow you to talk.
And we're talking about the architect and designer, yes?
Correct. Go ahead, Janet, you can speak if you unmute.
Okay, thank you, good evening, everyone. As you can see, we feel very strongly that our house only works with the design that we have submitted to you, and we've given you very strong arguments as to why we feel it should be approved as submitted. With respect to the square footage of 4615, we're going by what the assessor's map says, and I think too, you know, I mean, planning staff has not even contacted me saying that they found different information, et cetera. And I don't think that's very appropriate. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I wasn't really planning on talking.
I appreciate you being here and, you know, giving us the additional information. Are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners or staff at this point? In that case, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, the best, best next step would be to close the public hearing?
I've seen a second hand raised, it may be worth sorting out whether Mr. Herbert intends to speak on this item.
Randy Herbert.
Taking that comment, then it would be properly closed up here.
Fine. Is it Judy or is it?
It's Judy, Randy Herbert is next, and if you unmute yourself, you will be able to speak, Randy.
It looks like Hebert.
Yes, Randy Hebert, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. It, very short, the project is basically too big for the lot, would ruin the character of the neighborhood. I would point out that the code calls for no more than 50% of the square feet of the lot to be used as the dwelling. If they're not going to follow this code, why bother to have a code at all? The variances say they're requesting are way more than the lot is entitled to. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Hebert, may I ask, are you in the neighborhood?
I'm right across from there at 4705 Park Alivo, we're right at the end of the, right at the end of the, on the water, right there across from.
Thank you for participating this evening. Any other speakers that we can see, Judy?
I have another hand up from Janet Spinks.
I'm sorry, from whom?
From the applicant Janet Spinks.
Architect.
Did you hear me?
I'm sorry, Michael, what was that?
The architect.
Yes, I understand. Do you want to have the dialogue, commissioners? I'm happy with, I'm happy with listening to the applicant.
Given that this is a denial and the limited number of speakers, it may be reasonable to provide enough further three minutes, right, taking that particular item off the table in a future claim.
With no objection from the commissioners, then please take the three minutes or whatever you need to get the message across. Judy, if you unmute the applicant?
Okay, Janet, if you would like to unmute yourself, please.
I'm sorry, I removed my hand already, so sorry. I have no desire to speak any further.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Judy, does that mean we're done?
Correct, I don't see any other hands up.
Okay, and are there any other questions or comments from commissioners before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and now you know the recommendation from staff, which is to deny without prejudice based upon the inability to meet the requirements of the rear yard setback. If there are no, yes, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll leave this off, then. First of all, Brenda's comment on the square footage of the other project at 4615 Park Marisol was something that I brought up after our last meeting, just to make sure that that's explained fully. The minutes of our meeting where we approved that project had that project listed at 3,065 square feet. And when we reviewed this project, the applicant's information had it at over 4,000 square feet, so I was kind of thrown by the number and asked for more explanation on that. Nevertheless, the point of that size of the house was to suggest that there was a precedent in the neighborhood, and as we've discussed previously, there is no such thing as a precedent for a variance. A variance must meet the findings, and I think we've discussed this project at length and have determined, in my opinion, that the rear yard setback does not meet the requirements for the finding. So I would like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution 2020702, denying this project based on its rear yard setback without prejudice.
I'll second that motion.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
Um, I'd like, I'd like to be heard, just for a moment, I have an observation.
Okay, and then Michael, you're next, then, I saw your hand up as well.
Back when we took, I guess, what turned out to be a bit of a straw vote regarding this motion, before the determination was made to give the applicant an opportunity to agree to redesign, um, I was the only commissioner who was actually against the motion. Because the basis for denial is the rear yard setback, not site coverage. Site coverage is not on the table. It bothers me that, uh, I understand that this is a longer lot than most in the neighborhood. And yet, I don't know that denying this does not deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by others. My, my, what bothers me is that so many, so many of the properties in that area don't even come close to meeting the 20, the 20-foot rear yard setback. So I was and I remain in opposition to the motion, but the main thing that I wanted, I wanted to mention, um, I take, I take our obligation as commissioners very seriously. And among those obligations are to follow the law, to make sure that our general plan zoning laws and various, various other ordinances are followed. I'm not emotionally driven when it comes to our decision-making. Because if I was emotionally driven, I might have changed my position and, and voted to deny this, this application, which I'm not going to do, I will hold my position. But I was a bit distressed by the not-so-veiled threat that was contained in correspondence from the applicant, should we deny this, you know, this, this project? And I just, I just wanted to comment that I, I just find that type of communication extremely inappropriate. Again, it has, at the end of the day, it has no effect one way or another on how I vote, because how I vote is based upon what I believe is in compliance with our mandate. But I did want to bring that up and say that it's very, very, and I found it very inappropriate, that's all.
Thank you, Wendy, Michael, you are next, and John, do you want to speak as well?
Well, I moved, did you understand that I have seconded the motion?
Yes.
I think we're in discussion.
Yeah, I know, oh yeah, I'll, I'll have one very brief comment after.
Let me go to Michael because he, he beat you to the punch, so, Michael, your comments first, and then, John, I'll recognize you immediately.
Not so much comments, but a couple of questions. One, Matt mentioned that we are voting to deny or to approve this resolution, which denies the project based on the rear yard setback. I don't know if you recall, but I also objected to the fact that this exceeds, exceeds the site coverage, and I would not have supported that. If they come back and reduce the encroachment into the rear yard setback, does it come back to the Planning Commission so I can still say it's, it exceeds the site coverage?
That's a question for staff, I think.
I'm happy to take the first crack at that, so the answer so far is that if the, well, A, they've, they've declined to redesign, period, so that they're not applying for that, the redesigned project. But assume for a second that they change that decision. If the commission acts to deny this project, and they then redesign to meet, redesign in the way that was recommended, then it would still come back to the commission, it's still a site plan review that requires commission approval for a new single-family residence of this size in this location, so it would return to you as another application.
Okay, that's all, I just want to make sure that could still be considered if they come back and reduce the enclosure.
Yes.
And then the second question is regarding something that Wendy was alluding to, that the owner suggested that if he didn't get to, if this project wasn't approved, he would lease the property to the LA Mission, which I think would be quite generous, but I have a question for staff, does, do, I assume it would be a board and care homes because they wouldn't need city approval for that, I mean, if it's some sort of rehab facility, they probably would. Does that, does a board and care home count as affordable housing under RENA?
Generally, no. Affordable housing under RENA purposes requires it to be de-restricted for now 55 years, so a temporary lease would not qualify.
All right. Thank you.
John, you had a comment next.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I concur with Commissioner Kraut's comments during his motion. I would also just reiterate for the record, my comments from the last session, which was to compliment Ms. Spinks on what I thought was a, an compliment Ms. Spinks on what I thought was a, an excellent presentation of her position. And I also note that she obviously did a, a lot of investigative work. So she really went above and beyond the call of duty in terms of many of the projects that we see. So I wanted to just thank her for being available in all of these proceedings and presenting very clear exhibits to us. I simply cannot deny, I can't approve the project with the rear setback. Unlike Michael, I have no problem with the other three variance conditions. So that if the, if the applicant rethinks this and wants to deal with the rear setback problem and comes back to us, that's my view now. We'll have to see the project that comes back to us, if it does. But I just wanted to make those comments for the record, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? I have some thoughts myself, but I want to make sure that everybody had a chance to get their ideas on the table. Nothing else? Okay. The reason that I actually suggested to the commissioners that we take a consensus at the last meeting and not perforce deny or approve the resolution with the staff recommendation of denial was to make sure that we didn't go through an exercise where a redesign would come back and they would face significant additional time cost and pain and suffering. And I'm not sure I'm describing it very politically correctly in this case, but still, our job is to try to get the best projects done within the law in such a way that we're not holding our ammunition for a later fight. So I'm hearing a bit of that even now, and it's not an accusation, it's just an observation from my perspective. And I would just, before we vote, if, if the applicant recognizes that with denial or the approval of the resolution with a recommendation for denial of the rear yard setback variance, that does open the case for a very significant, significant additional amount of work. So I don't know if any of the other commissioners want to speak to what I just said, but if not, then I would close the discussion and vote on the motion and go from there. Is there any other comment? Okay, then the, if the maker of the motion would restate the motion.
Sure. I recommend that we adopt PC Resolution Number 2020-702 denying the project based on the rear yard setback variance, based on not meeting the rear yard setback findings for variance, and deny the project without prejudice.
And there was a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by, let me just, because it's visual, raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And I see four hands, and anybody opposed to the motion? One hand, Wendy. All right. Motion carries, four to one. And are there any other things that we need to do with Matt and/or Maureen at this point?
No, the record will reflect that the resolution to deny the project was approved by a vote of four to one with Commissioner Fosberg dissenting.
Thank you for your long time and fair consideration, everybody. We're moving on to the next item of business, which is, and let me get back to my agenda here momentarily. This is a matter continued from the 9/17 discussion, that's, I got the words out right, September 17th. And it's file number 18000265, a request for a site plan review, oak tree permit, and scenic quarter permit to construct a 2121 square foot, one-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. Proposed project includes a request for an oak tree permit to encroach within the protected zone of four oak trees and the removal of four non-heritage oak trees in order to construct the house and necessary site improvements. And the subject site is on, that's 24226 Dry Canyon Coal Creek Road. And the staff report is going to be done by Michael, right?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. You give me a minute, I'm going to launch the PowerPoint.
Thank you. And we've received additional information today. I had a chance to go into it, but I don't know if everybody has. And you might just comment on the fact that it is either backup information or if there is new and additional information that needs to be considered, if you just pointed out as we're going forward.
Absolutely. And, and before I get into the, the actual PowerPoint, I do want to mention for the commission that the reason why this was continued from the previous meeting is because we have received two letters of correspondence regarding this project. And the commission had requested the continuous items so that staff could provide comments. The staff report that was prepared and delivered to the commission for this project is our analysis of the issues that were raised in those two letters. We did receive, as was mentioned by the chair, another email this afternoon at around 3 o'clock. And I've reviewed that, the city, and Matt, the city attorney, has also reviewed that. Nothing in that letter really jumped out at us as, as new or different than what we've already analyzed. So we didn't see anything in the letter that was received today that would change our recommendation or staff's recommendation for this project. So with that, I'll get into the PowerPoint. As was mentioned, this is a, a project requesting a site plan review, oak tree permit, and a scenic quarter permit to construct a single-story house with a two-car attached garage at 24226 Dry Canyon Coal Creek Road. Dry Canyon Coal Creek Road, which is seen on the map over here along the left-hand side, is a road off of, that runs parallel to Mahalon Highway. This portion of the city, both Mahalon Highway and Dry Canyon Coal Creek, run pretty much north to south. The subject property is located over here between the two roads, and it's in the HM Hillside Mountainous Zoning District. And it's also within the scenic corridor overlay because it is within 500 feet from Mahalon Highway.
And Michael, let me just make a point that this is in the Malibu Creek watershed and a sub watershed of the Malibu Creek watershed, and not in the Los Angeles River watershed, which is literally up the road at the entrance to Mountain Park Estates and St. Andrews Lane and other areas that have been developed to the north.
That is correct. And as we look at the aerial here, and there's different lines on this, so I won't get into it at the moment. I just want to briefly discuss the, the subject site, which is, which is that area. As we look at this area or aerial, I just want to point out a couple of site circumstances. So the site is accessed from Dry Canyon Coal Creek. There's a common driveway that goes from Dry Canyon Coal Creek, and it serves three existing homes in this particular neighborhood. Actually, yeah, three, one, two, and three homes. These two homes are accessed from Mahalon Highway. Dry Canyon Coal Creek itself is actually situated much higher than the subject site. So it does steep or it does slope down pretty quickly and steeply from Dry Canyon Coal Creek to the, kind of the middle of the subject site, which is in a femoral stream. So when I've been out to the site, there's been no water, but during rain periods, there definitely could be water. And it is, it is identified as an ephemeral stream. For that purpose, there was a biological assessment report that was prepared, and it does address any issues with regards to biology. The project will be conditioned to meet all of the recommendations of the biological report. And there were a couple of conditions that were added that were specific to nesting bird surveys. From here, the site goes up again, slopes upwards towards the east to a relatively flat pad that was grade, rough graded at some point in the past. But this flat pad is still at a much lower elevation than Dry Canyon Coal Creek over here. And some of the pictures coming up will show you that. There is no sewer system in the nearby area, so existing homes and any proposed development will be required to have an onsite sewage disposal system, OWTS, or better known as a septic system. And the lots in this particular area range in size from about 32,000 square feet to 76,000 square feet. And the subject site is almost 47,000 square feet. It's 46,823 square feet.
Michael, can I ask you a couple of quick questions?
Yeah.
Is there sewer service from Las Vergenes Municipal Water District in Mahalon Highway?
There may be sewer system or sewer service along certain portions of Mahalon Highway. I'm not 100% sure whether or not it directly abuts this particular area. But this site is not close enough to, to a sewer system for them to be able to hook up to. Our code would require, if there was an available sewer system, it would require them to hook up to it. But they have demonstrated that there is none.
The second question is, the city owns property on the east edge of Dry Canyon Coal Creek Road. Could you back up one shot and take a look at where the city's property is?
Are you talking about? Actually, I'm not sure what, what area you're talking about.
That, put your cursor on that triangular shaped property just, just north of the yellow zone that you've marked.
This or this?
No, just above the yellow portion of the photography you're showing on the screen. It's my understanding, and actually I was involved with the actual receipt of the property from the developer on the west side of Dry Canyon Coal Creek Road when that project was okayed. The city actually took title to the property that's to the east of Dry Canyon Coal Creek Road. And I think it's actually that entire triangular chunk that you're seeing or pointing to with your, with your cursor.
Yeah, yeah, I believe, yeah, you're correct.
Okay. So the city is the neighbor.
Yes, the city is a neighbor to the north. And there, there is sewer up here, but unfortunately, that's not accessible to these properties along Dry Canyon Coal Creek.
Right.
Let's see, let me go back down to, to this particular image. As was mentioned in the project description, the proposed project does require an oak tree permit. That's because there are 13 oak trees within the general vicinity of the project site. However, based on the project scope and the oak tree permit or the oak tree report that was submitted, four oak trees would be encroached upon, and four oak trees are required to be removed in order to complete the project. The reason why I have this green, the green line on this image is because I do want to address one of the, one of the big issues that came out of the letter that was submitted back in September. And then still shows up in the letter that was submitted today by the property owner to the south is the dispute over the property lot configuration. And of course, before I get into the actual discussion of the property lot configuration, I want to reiterate what was made clear in the staff report, which is it is not the city's area to determine who owns what property. As long as a particular applicant has demonstrated or provided sufficient documentation to demonstrate that their property is configured the way that they have depicted on their site plan, then the city is compelled to act on that permit. If there's still a question or dispute over property ownership, then the suggestion is, is that the complaining party should take that to court and let the court determine that, that ownership issue. Now, as was also mentioned in the staff report, in order to address the concern that if this property was, or if this project were to be approved in its, in its current configuration, and subsequently, there was a judgment made by a court that the property ownership is, as claimed by the, one of the letters that was submitted by the property owner to the south, then we do have a condition that was added to the resolution to address that concern, and that would require that if a building permit has not yet been issued, that, and then a determination was made that would change the lot configuration, then the applicant would have to submit documentation to show that the proposed project still complies with all development standards. A quick look at the proposed project and consideration of development standards indicates that the project would still likely comply with the development standards, even if the, the lot size were reconfigured to this. The one issue would be pervious surface, but pervious surface, as we have discussed in the past, that, that can change based on the type of actual material that they're proposing to use as quote hardscape or a hard surface around the property. So other than that, from a development standard standpoint, should the lot be reconfigured to a smaller size, it would likely still meet the city's development standards. That being said, the project has been reviewed by the Public Works Department, as well as two surveyors have been, or the applicant has had two letters prepared by surveyors indicating that the, that the lot configuration, as demonstrated or depicted on the site plan, is accurate and consistent with the legal description. And the reason why I have this image on the screen is to just quickly go over that legal description, which is, which has been the source of debate from the property owner to the south. And the, the main point here is that, under that legal description, it defines the subject site as a portion of parcel four and three. Now, I've labeled on here parcel four and parcel three. And if you can imagine, there's no white line at the moment because the original parcel map that was created for this particular area included four parcels, and this, this being parcel four, and this being parcel three. Again, imagining that with no white line running through this. From there, at a future point in time, there was a certificate of compliance that was recorded that reconfigured these lots, and it was described, as in the legal description, as starting at, starting at the northeastern corner of the property and moving down 130 feet. And from there, following a parallel line through both parcel three and four to the most westerly line of parcel four. And those are the two key components to that description because, number one, parcel four was configured originally and still remains as a flag lot. So the reason why it says to the most westerly line of parcel four is because the most westerly line is all the way over here, which is what this, this line follows. Not this particular line, which is what the letter from Mr. Alliance is claiming. In addition to that, the legal description also mentions following a, a parallel line through parcels three and four. If parcel three was irrelevant to that discussion, then it would have just ended at parcel four. But because they meant, because the legal description mentions both parcels three and four, there is relevance to that term and to that reference to parcel three. So because of that, and the additional letters that were submitted by the surveyor, by two separate surveyors, determining that, in their professional opinion and judgment, that the legal description defines the lot as such, staff is in the position or has the position that sufficient documentation has been submitted to confirm that the property configuration is as stated and depicted in the site plan. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that was sort of, that was certainly one of the big issues that was raised in the letter. And throughout this, I'll also probably, I'll touch on some of the other issues that, that came up as well. But was addressed in the written staff report. So with that, I just want to move on to a couple of site photographs. This is a photograph taken from Dry Canyon Coal Creek looking towards the project site. And here you could see that the story poles had already been installed at this point in time. Off this direction, you'll see Mahalon Highway and the associated power lines that run along Mahalon Highway are up over here in the distance. This image is taken from the northeastern corner of the subject site facing southwest. Again, you could hear, you could see the story poles that were installed for the proposed one-story structure. This is the home directly to the south, which is the home of Mr. Alliance, one of the, the individuals that submitted the letter. I also want to point out that the story poles were installed at the site back in June, on June 3rd of 2020. So they have been up at the site for quite some time. And since the story poles had been installed, I had not received any formal letter, but I did receive at least one phone call from, from two of the property owners on Dry Canyon Coal Creek in this particular. from uh two of the property owners on uh Dry Canyon Coal Creek in this particular neighborhood. And those phone calls came after the hearing notices were sent out. And then finally, here is a uh just a picture of facing towards the subject site from Mahal and Highway. Uh, the subject site is over here uh south from this vantage point. And you can just uh make out or or see the uh story poles. So um, that being said, from this particular picture, it was after pulling over on Mahal and Highway and standing at the edge of Mahal and Highway uh for a lot of Mahal and Highway, um, the site is either pretty far away or relatively obscured. Certainly, once you per- once you travel further south, uh, it's actually completely obscured by existing development. Nevertheless, it is within the scenic corridor, it is visible. And for that reason, uh, there were certain design considerations that were um, looked at by the ARP, and I can get, I will get to that later. So just a background of the project. Um, before I get into the background of the specific project, I do want to point out and mention, as was uh discussed in the staff report back in September, that there was a project that was approved at this site back in two thousand seven or two thousand eight. Um, the permits were at least submitted in two thousand seven. And that was for a two-story five thousand four hundred and fifty-five square foot house. Uh, that project was approved by the planning commission. Actually, it was approved in two thousand eight. And it was subsequently appealed by one of the property owners i- in that neighborhood, and it went to the city council. The city council at that meeting in two thousand eight uh on April sixteenth upheld the planning commission's approval and approved the project. Um, unfortunately for that property owner, that was probably in the worst uh financial time for single-family homes uh that we've seen in a long time, and that project never materialized uh from a financial standpoint, it just, it didn't move forward. And eventually those permits, uh, those approvals expired. And the property was then um obtained years later by the current property owner. So this particular project was submitted to the city on March fifth, two thousand eighteen. And it was submitted as an application for a two thousand one hundred and twenty-one square foot house uh with a uh one-story house with an attached two-car garage. Uh, the project was reviewed by the city's Development Review Committee on April third, two thousand eighteen. No major issues were uh discussed or presented at that time. And then, after that, the project was also reviewed by the Architecture Review Panel on October twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. And then again, on January twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. And at that point, the Architecture Review Panel recommended approval of the final design to the planning commission. And as I had mentioned before, the story poles were installed on June third, twenty twenty. And then the application was deemed complete on August twenty-eight, twenty twenty. Uh, at which point, then the public hearing notices were sent out, and it was scheduled for a planning commission meeting. So the project consists of constructing a new single, single-story home on a vacant lot and associated uh driveway and uh retaining walls. The project uh again also requires site grading, so although it was ref graded, it will require precise grading as well as the installation of uh retaining walls in order to accommodate the house. The initial project included a request for a pool. However, because the sys- the uh city requires a tier one uh septic system design, um, they could not fit a pool on this site because uh they had to install leach fields or design for leach fields instead of another alternative design. Uh, as mentioned before, the project also includes an oak tree permit for the request to remove four coas live oaks, and these are non-heritage oak trees. And also to encroach into the protected zone of four coas live oaks. Of course, it also involves utility connections and the installation of an onsite waste treatment system. So here is a site plan of the proposed project uh from Dry Canyon Coal Creek. As I mentioned, there's an existing common driveway that uh is used to access the other three homes in the neighborhood. The proposed project includes the installation of a proposed asphalt driveway uh through parcel number three for which there is an easement. Um, and then the installation of a of a driveway onsite. The purpose of the driveway obviously is for ingress egress, but it also provides necessary fire department access and turnaround. So uh, if you can see from this image, it do- it does have a hammerhead design over here. It's a requirement of the fire department, given the distance of this property from uh Dry Canyon Coal Creek. Uh, as far as we know, there's no requirement to have to install a new fire hydrant because there is a fire hydrant uh close enough to the project site that it meets the fire department's requirements. Um, as I had mentioned, the project includes the the construction of a new one-story, single-family residence at about twenty-one hundred square feet that with an attached two-car garage, and that's represented in this yellow uh, the yellow area of this image. And then the green area represents the leach fields and the red area represents the proposed septic tank. Um, as I had mentioned, the initial project included a pool over in this area of the site, however, given the the cert- the site constraints and the need to install a leach field, and this is pretty much the only location they can install a leach field, um, they were uh required and forced to drop the pool. With regards to to the septic OWTS, because that was another issue that was raised, we did have our uh Building and Safety Department review this project, and they have already provided a conceptual approval of the OWTS design. And I also had a further conversation and uh forward the neighbors' concern to our uh to our Building and Department for their feedback regarding the OWTS design. And their feedback to me was that, given the site constraints, primarily the fact that there's a stream over here, there is no other feasible location to install the leach fields and the OWTS system. Uh, they are required to put it based on requ- required setbacks from the stream. They were, they are required to put it over here. And in the Building and Safety Department's opinion, the leach field and the system is designed to be as far away as possible meeting those constraints, but also as far away from uh neighboring properties. So uh, there's, in their opinion, there's really no other feasible alternative uh other than to just not build, build the house. So these are just uh, these lines just represent, shows you the the setbacks which comply with the HM zoning district. Here are some quick uh proposed elevations, the front and east elevations. Uh, here, I just want to point out that the max height of the building is seventeen feet, and that's this uh sort of entry feature. The rest of the building uh sort of varies in height between thirteen and fifteen feet, depending upon where uh where it's situated in terms of from the height from the natural, from the natural grade. And here's just a color rendering of the proposed project. I included what was approved back in two thousand eight, just from a perspective standpoint. Again, the uh project that was approved in two thousand eight was over five thousand square feet and two stories. The proposed project is more than half that size at twenty-one hundred square feet and only a single-story building. As I had mentioned, uh, this project was reviewed by the city's Architecture Review Panel uh both on October twenty-sixth and again on January twenty-fifth. Um, and I I do want to point all of this stuff out as well, because I know that was one of the issues that was raised. One of the letters is with regards to the architecture of the proposed project. And quite frankly, the the ARP actually did note that uh back in October twenty-sixth that while they're not, while there is no precedent for modern homes in this particular area, uh, in their opinion, they were supportive of a well de- well-designed, modern home at this particular location. Um, and that also is important too, because there is no design standard for this particular area of the city. Uh, there's nothing that says it has to be cottage or craftsman or or uh one architectural style over the other. However, it does have to meet the city's scenic corridor guidelines. And so uh, from that perspective, the ARP certainly focused attention on making sure that the proposed uh project methods, the uh design guidelines, uh, they requested a darker roof as opposed to a white roof. They requested that the wood siding, for example, be carried around to different portions of the of the elevation. And in fact, the ARP requested that the roof uh roof has different roof elevation lines. Uh, the original project that was submitted was a completely flat roof. And so based on some of the feedback from the ARP, uh, the pro- the uh applicant did redesign to address the concerns of the ARP and make it a a modern design that the ARP requested, as well as incorporate design features that would address uh scenic corridor issues. And so with that, on January twenty-fifth, the ARP uh recommended approval of this design to the planning commission. This is just a quick chart of the development standards. Uh, I won't belabor this particular issue, but it it's included in the staff report, and it demonstrates that the proposed project meets all development standards for the HM zoning district. And then here are some photos of the surrounding homes. Uh, again, there's three homes that share this common driveway. And these are pictures of those three homes in the, in the immediate area. And these homes range in size from three thousand six hundred and thirty-five square feet to three thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet. So from a home comparison standpoint, the floor area ratio of the project uh floor area ratio for properties near the subject site range from point six to point one-two, with an average of point oh eight. And home sizes range from thirty-one hundred square feet to almost fifty-three hundred square feet, with an average of about four thousand square feet. This is looking a little bit beyond just the three homes off of the common driveway, but other homes in nearby along Dry Canyon Coal Creek and Mahal and Highway. And so from a comparison standpoint, the subject site has an FAR of point oh five. And the proposed home is twenty-one hundred twenty-one square feet, both of which are below the averages for the surrounding area. And uh clearly, the size of the home is actually smaller than any of the other homes in the surrounding area. And finally, from a oak tree standpoint, as I had mentioned, there are thirteen oak trees in the general vicinity. This particular site plan is just pointing out the oak trees that are impacted by the proposed project. The green represents oak trees that are near the project that would be encroached upon by the project, given the size of the tree and and its protected zone. And the red Xs represent oak trees that are proposed for removal. Um, the only reason why these three oak trees are being proposed for removal is because of the the septic system and the leach field design. Again, there's not a lot of flexibility with regards to that, uh, given the site constraints, moving the property or the development any further to the west encroaches too much or too close to the uh the riparian edge of the ephemeral stream. So uh, the site has been designed to to sort of balance all the possible constraints. Um, that being said, the four trees that are proposed for removal are all relatively smaller oak trees. And uh, they're not in the the greatest health, but they do represent approximately thirty-five total inches of oak tree diameter and the property. Uh, the applicant will be required to mitigate for the loss of those thirty-five inches worth of oak trees, uh, whether that's onsite or offsite or through a a combination thereof. And finally, um, from a staff conclusion standpoint, the proposed project is a single-family home, which is an allowed use in the HM zoning district. The project meets all required development standards. It's well-designed uh and compatible with other existing homes in the neighborhood. Architecture aside, the the overall um, size of the home and scale is certainly compatible. From an architectural standpoint, the ARP does recommend approval of the design. The project is exempt from CEQA. Um, and as I had mentioned, there was a biological assessment study that was prepared for this project that found that there were no overriding concerns or issues with regards to the proposed project. Uh, and both the oak tree report and the biological assessment were peer-reviewed by the city's uh biological consultants, and they agreed in uh with the con- with the conclusions that were made in those reports. So finally, the proposed project meets all required findings for a site plan review, oak tree permit and a scenic corridor permit. And with that, staff recommends that the commission adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash seven zero four, approving file number eighteen zero 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 two six five. And I do want to note uh before I finish that the resolution that was included in the staff report for planning commission for this meeting includes several conditions of approval that were added based on the letters that were submitted to address the concerns that were raised by those uh, by those letters. So um, there were several conditions that staff added, both in consultation with the city attorney as well as uh with the Public Works Department to make sure that the issues that were raised would be adequately addressed. Uh, with that, I am certainly available for questions.
Michael, before you do go on and before we ask questions, uh, can you point out the additions that you mentioned just now?
Yes, hold on a second.
Everybody needs to grab their resolution and look at whatever page you're going to call that.
Right, so on on exhibit A, which is PC Resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven zero four, on page eleven, we added uh condition number nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two to address the concerns that were raised in the, in the two letters.
And uh, do we know that that may or may not be acceptable to the neighbors that for which this was uh added?
I have not heard feedback from the neighbors with regards to these, with regards to the resolution. Um, it was posted online, but they have not commented specifically on this. The resolution was provided to the applicant and the property owner, and uh they are agreeable to the addition of these conditions.
Sure, and uh I would ask Judy or whomever, um, if we have correspondence uh that we need to either consider or that might be delivered um with speakers this evening.
I'm looking for hands on anyone who would wish to speak.
I'm really asking if there's any correspondence, you know, that uh needs to be identified, that's all.
I'll let um Michael Klein answer that if there was any correspondence.
The only correspondence that came in was the letter, the email that was uh provided to the commission earlier today.
But there was an attachment.
Yes, there is an email with an attachment. Did you receive the attachment?
I did.
Okay.
That, I think that was, I think that attachment was for Mr. Alliance. And I think he did, while he didn't address these conditions nineteen through twenty-two specifically, he addressed the substance of most of them in that attachment.
Right.
Okay. I did read it.
And also to note for the record, there was a further letter from Mr. Alliance, previously provided dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Yes.
Uh, which is in the current evening's packet as exhibit uh B.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification, Michael. Uh, once we conclude your remarks and tell us what you, what you would like to have us consider next.
Uh, well, that that concludes this particular uh overview. And so again, staff staff's recommendation is to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty dash seven oh four as it was amended and included in the uh staff report for tonight's PC meeting. And that would approve file number eighteen zero 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 two six five.
Okay.
I can, do you want me to leave the PowerPoint up for now or turn it off and turn it back on if necessary?
Well, uh, let's just take it a step, um, leave it up for the moment. And um, I have I think at this point, um, unless there are questions from the commissioners or um, comments regarding any of the procedural aspects or from staff on what has been presented, then I'll open the public hearing. Hearing none, then I will open the public hearing and um, let's uh hear from the applicant. And as we decided earlier, um, hopefully, you'll, your remarks will be able to fit into the three-minute allotment. But uh, if there's additional discussion back and forth, you know, we can certainly um, you know, consider everything that is relevant this evening. So I have opened the public hearing, and Judy, do you have folks who wish to speak?
Uh, yes, uh, you mentioned you wanted to hear from the applicant, is that right?
Well, uh, if the applicant is with us and does wish to speak, uh, absolutely, but um, if not, then we can move on.
Okay, I I do see the applicant, um, and hand is raised, so you, if you unmute yourself, you will be able to speak, sir.
And I would then ask the applicant um to give us your name and city of residence, that's all you need to do, and um, the question is, do you need to have the presentation materials left up on the screen, or can we go to the Zoom gallery?
Hi, so my name is Zalman Nemtsov, the applicant. I live in Calabasas. Um, I don't need the PowerPoint presentation um open.
Okay, then, Michael, if you'd uh, you go ahead and draw. Okay, then, Michael, if you go ahead and drop that, let's go back to the gallery. And Mr. Nemtsov, are you able to join us via Zoom or are you on the phone?
Via Zoom.
Okay, can we?
The Zoom won't allow video, so it'll it'll just be audio from them.
We're not allowing for a visual?
Way that is set up for the IT staff to ensure against Zoom bombing, which we previously experienced at least one meeting. The city folk are on video. All else are on audio.
Got it.
Which is consistent with the governance order.
Mr. Zalman or Mr. Nemtsov, that's where we are at this point. So in order to prevent mischief, then if you just give us your comments, then away we go.
Sure, I'll just briefly comment. I'd like to thank the planning commission's time for this meeting and putting it on the agenda. I don't want to take up too much time because as the applicant, I agree with the resolution and all of the recommendations of approvals. I just wanted to briefly address Mr. Alliance's latest letter, which seems to have come for the second time last minute, I guess at three o'clock today. I'd like to just briefly point out the applicant has five items that he posted in his letter. In regards to number one, Mr. Alliance never responded to one of the licensed surveyors that I had hired after he wrote his first letter. I had hired a second licensed surveyor to review the lot configurations. He had emailed and called Mr. Alliance, spoke with him on the phone and then had emailed him the specific language of the law configuration and why it says what it says. And Mr. Alliance never responded to him, but yet sent a last minute again, opposition, which I'm not sure why. Mr. Alliance has known about this project for about two and a half years. Before he bought the neighboring house, I actually met with him before he even got into escrow and gave him a copy of all of the plans. Because it's just easier with the neighbors knowing what's going on exactly, so that if there are any issues, we can redesign it accordingly. And anytime any issue came up, whether it was with the architectural review panel or anybody, we've always reworked the project to accommodate whatever needed to be accommodated. That gets to my second point, which is the project fully complies with every single requirement and department between the city and all sub departments. Number two, the additional, we had, I had gotten an additional easement from the previous owner who Mr. Alliance bought the property from, that specifically states that the easement is to comply with the fire department, the driveway entrance to conform to the fire department requirements. The previous owner had given permission for the driveway to go through and to conform with all of the fire department's requirements. Mr. Alliance bought the property knowing that easement, and in fact, he bought it a few days after that easement was recorded. He entered into escrow and I had given him a copy of that easement. So before he even got into escrow, he knew all of the details of the project. And basically, I'd like to just end that everything complies. And despite him knowing about the project for two and a half years, he only submitted both of these oppositions literally in the ninth hour. And I'll conclude on that.
Thank you very much. And I don't think our intent was to create any adversarial or oppositional, you know, discussion here. We wanted answers for everybody concerned in order to make sure that we can make the best decision on behalf of all the parties. So is there anybody? Thank you for your remarks. And I would ask, is there anyone else who wishes to speak, Judy?
Let's look to see if anyone wants to raise their hand.
Also, I will mention that the property owner is is in attendance as well, in case you want to hear from the property owner.
I don't see any additional hands to speak.
Okay.
And Michael? We might double check that. I see two now.
Yeah, Mr. Fernandez is the property owner.
Okay, I will allow Mr. Fernandez to speak. Please unmute yourself.
And Mr. Fernandez, if you would give us your name and city of residence, that's all we need, nothing else.
He must be trying to unmute himself. Here we go.
Steven Fernandez, Valley Village. And excuse me, my wife is also here, but she's unfortunately attending her German class on Zoom right now. But she is also here. And so I don't have anything specific to add to what Mr. Nemtsov presented to the commission, except to state that this is the home of our dreams. It's the culmination of our life's work. I'm turning sixty this year. And this has been one of the most challenging, rigorous undertakings of our lives. We've been renting for four years in anticipation of hopefully moving into our dream home. And it is our intention to fully comply with any and all conditions that the commission deems are appropriate in accordance with the planning commission. And I'm originally from the Sunset Mesa area, which as the commission may know, has its backyard Topanga Canyon. And so in the sunset of our lives, it's going to be hopefully our dream to live in Calabas, Calabasas, which we've spent a lot of time there over the years. And so if the commission has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them on behalf of my wife and I.
Thank you for your remarks and you know, I'll ask the commissioners and staff if anything that they may have heard gives cause to talk about this more. And ask any of the commissioners if they have questions or comments. And thank you for your remarks, Mr. Fernandez. And if we need to have you back, I'll leave the public hearing open in order to make sure that we have an appropriate dialogue if necessary.
Chair Washburn, we do have another speaker who had raised his hand, Mr. Alliance.
Okay.
Well, we turn to Commissioner comments and questions.
We also have Commissioner Mueller was.
No, I, no, I was just, I thought there was another speaker.
Okay.
Okay. And do we have another speaker?
Dan.
Yes.
In that case.
Go ahead and speak, Dan A.
Yes, I'm Daniel Alliance. Good evening. I'm the next door neighbor. This is nothing personal against the applicant, against Fernandez. The issue is, in the winter, I have a lot of rainfall coming onto my property. And that has not been addressed by the resolutions. I do appreciate that they've added additional resolutions such as requiring the curb to be an extra four to six inches high or the four foot wide planter. I do appreciate that the commission has acknowledged there's that there is a flooding issue and has recently added these resolutions. But this does not adequately resolve the flooding issue. I have a major flooding issue that has happened the past couple of winters since I purchased the property. And I have a lot of rainfall coming with force into my swimming pool and up to my property at a high level. My swimming pool turned brown and then green, and I had to actually fix that. It took a lot of work to fix it. If you pave just north of my fence, you will make the situation even worse. You will exacerbate the situation. And while I do appreciate the commission's statement that they're gonna, that this will, that this will not be affected. They're relying on a public works document that was assuming a rainfall of point seven to one inches. And you have more rain than that even during a drought season. The applicant's land is higher in elevation than mine and it's sloped down towards me. This putting the septic tank, actually, if you look at the presentation on page nine and on page fifteen, the septic tank is in two different places, just based on Mr. Klein's presentation. On page nine, it's in the southeast corner of the applicant's land. On page fifteen of the presentation, the septic tank is located just north of my swimming pool, which would be just south of the applicant's proposed garage. The septic tank is way too close to me. It's pretty much right on my border. It should be somewhere else. It doesn't make sense. And as long as you please take into account everything else that I've written, that's good enough for me.
Thank you for that. And I would say, Michael or anybody on staff, is there a need for reassurance or for any other considerations? Yes, Maureen, please.
The, as, as the commission knows, but perhaps the public should be reminded, there are two parts to building a home. The first part is to receive approvals for the use and the standards of the placement of the home through the planning commission. But the second piece is to obtain a building permit. So issues, detail issues such as drainage, such as the position of a septic tank, a leach field are not considered, except in a general sense at this time through the planning commission. But the details of that layout will be required to be addressed during the building permit process through the Department of Building and Safety. And this commission just went at our last meeting through a fairly extensive discussion on the requirements of pervious surfaces. So knowing that there will be an improvement and there will be attention to runoff from this property. There is, at that next phase, attention to the position of the septic tank to the extent that it is within the building code requirements. So the items here will be addressed in the condition that requires building permits and permits from Public Works on this project. Thank you.
If I could add one further point on that. If the outcome of the building and safety discussions, which will also include final review by the fire department by LA County Flood Control District related to the stream and the county flood control easement on this, the western portion of the site and any other applicable agencies. If the outcome of those decisions or consultations is a change in the location of any of the facilities that forces a change in the house, that kind of a change to the site plan would come back to this commission for review and approval by the commission, as opposed to a minor relocation of the septic septic system that does not change the house's location. Thank you.
And then also, if I can just add another, another point to all of this too, is that one of the reasons why this project has been in the pipeline for as long as it has is because it has gone through a conceptual review both with building and safety for the OWTS design as well as public works for grading drainage and hydrology. And the reason why we do that is, as Matt pointed out, if there's a, an issue with either of those designs that would then affect the site plan, then we need to know that now so that the project in front of the commission is assumed to be reasonably buildable from a, from a conceptual standpoint. That being said, when Public Works looks at the grading plan, they're even at a conceptual level, they're still looking at some pretty detailed information and one of the main things, and we followed up with Public Works regarding the concern from Mr. Alliance. And Public Works had pointed out and agreed that right now the site is at a higher elevation than Mr. Alliance. That's a, that's a a circumstance that exists today, no matter what, whether or not this project moved forward or not. Mr. Alliance purchased a property down, down slope from another property. So this proposed project does not alter that existing condition. However, based on the grading plans, one of the things that Public Works requires is to ensure that drainage is properly adequate and dispose of offsite and not impact downstream properties. So by regrading the site for the proposed project, it will actually flatten out the existing pad and make it less, make the site not slope as much as it currently does down towards Mr. Alliance. And that was one of the things that Public Works looked at. It will actually redirect water around Mr. Alliance's house and around the driveway, which is one of the reasons why Public Works recommended the condition for the curb. But the grading plan and the drainage plans also show that it includes a receptor on to the west of the of the house. So really, the intent of water drainage for this property is to bring it to the west and not to the south. And to the west, they're then able to treat it with a, with a proper proper outlet system. So I just wanted to point out, these are certainly factors that are considered in even in the conceptual stage. Public Works agreed that the proposed project would improve any flooding or the current drainage pattern and redirect water to the west. And same thing with OWTS. That was reviewed conceptually by the Building and Safety Department, who agreed, in fact, they required the change to the leach field for the, to comply with the tier one requirements. And building and safety, again, they, they looked at the plan and they determined there is no other feasible location for the leach fields. And the tank could still move around. It doesn't have to be located specifically where it is, but it does have to be located in a particular area that is accessible to be serviced. So that's the the one criteria for the for the tank. But as Maureen pointed out, a final design will go through and meet all building code requirements.
I know that we can't legislate the weather or adjudicate the rain amount now in our Santa Monica Mountains area. And we are subject to some pretty wild weather patterns and so forth. But it might be helpful to know what our current level of I guess, storm reaction is. Are we prepared for a ten year storm, a twenty five, fifty or a hundred year storm in in dealing with hillside mountainous development activity?
The city prepares maps for FEMA as part of hazard mitigation app thing. So we plan for a one hundred and a five hundred year storm.
Okay, I know that, I mean, everybody complains about how difficult we are to deal with in Calabasas, but the truth is, we're looking to you know, to be prepared for the the worst case scenario in our design and engineering and all the other aspects. And we're known for being careful and it's of value to the people who live here, you know, including Mr. Alliance and Mr. Fernandez. So I can assure you that, you know, we're, we're dealing with the most realistic and conservative of standards in dealing with these matters. And that's all, that's what you heard gets worked out between the approval of the resolution and the actual design and development of the property. So I know that we'll be paying attention until they actually get a certificate of occupancy to get in that building. And the neighbors matter. We all, we all know that. Is there anything else that any of the commissioners have in the way of questions or comments so we can deal with that? And shall I leave the public hearing open so that you can get some comments back from the applicant? Okay, Michael, I'll start with you.
Yeah, first, a couple of questions. I'll do comments later. One is on the scenic corridor, page four, number four of the resolution, it says that the project must be compatible in design, appearance and scale with the, you know, surrounding area. So my question is, does any neighbor think this blends with the area? Does any neighbor support this project? Michael?
Well, the only correspondence we have received are the two letters or now three letters that that you guys received. And those letters did not indicate that.
However, I would note, if I may jump in on this one briefly, that the finding is required by the code does not ask the question whether the neighbors do or do not support the project. Certainly, that's information to be considered as you evaluate the characteristics of the neighborhood. But it is not a neighbor veto finding. Rather, it is a finding for the commission in your considered judgment to decide, to decide whether you find that the proposed project is or is not compatible in design, appearance and scale with the existing surrounding uses.
Right. But if I thought some neighbor really thought it was compatible, then I might come to that conclusion because I don't think it is compatible. The next question is about the drainage. And I think you kind of referred to it, Michael or Maureen. That storage tank is in three different places. It's in two different places on the maps and then it's in a third place on your slide. So I on your slide. So I guess what you're saying is that that'll move around depending on building and safety or something.
The storage tank that you're referring to is actually the for the septic system that doesn't have to do with the drainage.
No, that I'm talking about the septic system because I'm concerned about that. But it moves, it's in different places on on it's in three different places.
And and that's a function of, as this project had been moving through building and safety, they've had to make some adjustments to meet building and safety's requirements. So that was a technical error on the plans, but it will generally be located in that area because it has to be accessible to a service truck.
And and I would add that the septic tank is underground. So you will not see that tank.
Right.
So whether or not it's 10 feet that way or 15 feet that way, all you will see is a manhole in the driveway.
Thanks for the clarification. And I also want to ask about the driveway turnaround area because the leach field is also not in the same place on each map. So part of the driveway turnaround area on sheet G2 of two in in exhibit B covers the leach field on A dash 1.2 on exhibit B. So I assume that's not a good idea to put a driveway on top of the leach field. I assume that'll be adjusted or okay, I just, all right. Those are my only questions.
John. Just a couple. Michael, can you answer the question whether or not the proposal adopted all of the recommendations that are set forth in the September, the January 25 ARP minutes? I asked that because the last sentence says with the described recommendations, the panel recommended approval of the design. I assume that means if you do all the recommendations, we will approve the design.
That is correct. In fact, I think it went slightly even further and requested that the final design or the final roof color be sent to one of the ARP members. And it was and it was confirmed to be acceptable.
Okay, good. Thank you. Can you comment on the location on the property where the mitigation trees will go if they do go on the property? Is there any thought to that yet?
At this point in time, there's not concrete thought. However, I I do believe I might have put in there as a condition, or if it's not, I recommend that we consider it that they go along the northern property line, maybe in the northeastern corner, if possible. They can't go where the leach field is necessarily, but somewhere along the northern property line, if possible, to help provide some screening or buffering from the scenic corridor.
I always like to see the mitigation trees, if possible, go on the site. And it looked looked to me like there's plenty of room.
It's over an acre.
Yeah. So I would, yeah, and this isn't, they're taking out four trees and and that's not a lot of inches to add on.
Actually, condition number 26 mentions what I said, which is it, to the extent feasible, oak tree mitigation should be planned along the north property line.
Okay, good. I did have a couple of things on the resolution, Mr. Chairman, but I don't know if this is, you want to get other general comments first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I think there was a typo, but I wouldn't worry about it, except this seems rather important on page four of the resolution, condition five. There's a reference to Valdez. Other homes along Valdez.
It should be Dry Canyon.
Yeah. So you just want to correct that typo. And looking at the new conditions, 19 through 22, I'm wondering two things. On condition 20, the applicant shall install a four to six inch curb. Is there some reason to leave that wiggle room? And I just, why don't we just make it four or six or five?
That was a condition recommended by Public Works.
I think the intention is to leave some some opportunity for onsite adjustments given particular topography subject to the public works considered directors considered judgment.
Okay, all right. I thought the condition 21 is a little fun. The wording is a little funny. The second sentence is the plant, the planter shall include screening vegetation, which shall be maintained in good condition at all times. It's unclear whether the planter must be maintained or the vegetation. I would, I would just put a period after vegetation in the third line and then start a new sentence. The vegetation shall be maintained in healthy and good condition at all time. Okay. It's just a tweak. And then more importantly, I think is 22. I don't understand why this is in here. It basically says, if agreed upon between the applicant and other people, other owners, this private road maintenance agreement, everybody will pay their fair share. Well, we want to have that agreement. And it's a nice concept, but I can see people maybe reaching a different conclusion that someone pays more than another. I don't know what fair share means. It doesn't necessarily mean equal share. So I just don't get the point of 22.
22 was was a tricky one, and that was to address the letter submitted by Mr. Dale Benz. Yeah. Where he was concerned about maintenance of the common driveway. We also have to balance a nexus. We can't put all costs of the common driveway on one particular property owner. So the the purpose of this condition, and Matt could probably answer it better than me, but the purpose is to just make sure that if there is an agreement at a future date, that this property owner would participate in that agreement. But we're not going to get in the middle of the particulars of any particular agreement or force the other property owners into agreement based on this project.
If I could add one point to that, the intention here is to set it up that if this property develops and if over time the other three houses redevelop, then in the end, after all four were done, all four would have the same condition. The city could then require all four, each with their nexus of each redevelopment to enter into a proper shared maintenance agreement. Were we to have the same subdivision done now, we'd require that as a condition of the subdivision. The county did not do that in their wisdom, and this is intended to kind of set it up to fix that. But recognizing that three are developed, one is being done now, the redevelopment cycle is probably long. It is, as is noted, not exactly going to change the game on the facts on the ground now because we can't force this applicant to pay for the driveway imposed or enjoyed by the others, the other three.
My concern would be that that the provision creates more questions than answers. It's if this happens in the future. And if the if if the the owners of the neighboring properties agree, then why are we, why are we in this at all?
I think staff would have no particular objection or condition 22 removed subject to the commission's judgment. Thank you.
Oh, I I certainly think it's unnecessary and potentially unnecessarily confusing.
And it also says, if agreed between the applicant and the owners of the neighboring property. So if they disagree, then the whole condition is moot anyways. So I I think we need to stay out of the the or or distribution of the easement and its rights and and stick to planning.
Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Peter, you have additional questions or comments?
I did have a couple. Matt, if you could just help confirm for me, I know we've had some issues postponing this particular item based on questions of land ownership. It's my understanding that we're here to deal with planning and if there is an issue of land ownership, that has to be taken to a body other than the planning commission. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'll speak very briefly on that point. As we're all aware, none of us are a judge nor a court, with the exception of our administrative law judge, who is not a judge on these issues. Who owns land is subject to the judgment of a competent of a court of common jurisdiction. Here, the Los Angeles County Superior Court. The planning commission is, however, charged with assuring that you have substantial evidence that the person applying for a permit for land, for land development has a legal right to the land and thus can meet the requirement for a complete application as our code requires signature of the property owner, if not the applicant. Staff recommends that you have evidence in the record to make that finding based on the deed to Mr. Fernandez and his signature on the application permitted by Mr. Nemso. And that would be sufficient information to move forward on the planning basis. The fact that there is another claimant to the same land, Mr. Alliance, and that his claims are unresolved doesn't preclude your ability to move forward on the planning issues. Mr. Alliance has a forum to resolve his claims and it is up to him and his opponent, Mr. Fernandez, to sort those issues out. And as noted by Mr. Klein, deal with that if there is a judgment that cuts this the lot in half, as would roughly be the case if Mr. Alliance's claims are accepted by a court, then condition number 19 would require the site to be reconfirmed by the committee of development director as complying with all the pieces of the code that stem from the size of the site, something like flora ratio or setbacks. So we are confident that you can move forward on the planning issue. Mindful that the hardship issues have to be resolved elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that those comments aren't falling on deaf ears and appreciate your clarification there. Michael, if I could ask you a couple of quick questions here as well. The site plan approval that we're looking at here for the OWTS, I know we're not into the building and safety phase and it's not our job to design that, but I do want to make sure that there's enough room to fit this on the site. Have we confirmed that the leach field is 100 feet away from a body of water, even?
Yes.
We have. Okay. And then as far as the rest of the setbacks, property setbacks and stuff of the septic tank that will move in the places that it has been shown and still stay within those setbacks, we can reasonably confirm that it fits.
Yes, that's actually one of the reasons why this took so long to get to the planning commission is getting through that conceptual review with building and safety.
Okay, thank you. With regard to the scenic corridor permit, one of the things that we're looking at is a medium to dark roof and the roof is defined as gray. Is there any chance we could define that as light, medium or dark gray? Because if we're making a finding that we've met the scenic corridor permits, that it has a medium to dark roof and the name of the color is ambiguous, it makes it very difficult for us.
Yeah, we we certainly can. I don't know if I have the the material sample handy, but it was definitely a darker gray, not a not a light gray, not not close to the shade of your shirt, for example. But if you want to be clear to a dark gray. Right. But if we want to be clear.
Michael, is it darker than?
Yes, yeah.
So we could safely call it a medium gray or a medium to dark gray?
Yes, you can.
Okay. And then regarding the oak tree permit, two thoughts occurred to me. One is, it looks like the oak trees are just on the perimeter. Is there a reason on the site that the house wasn't just the entire thing, wasn't just moved? You know, 10 feet to the east to save the oak trees?
The site is, well, 10 feet would actually be quite a quite a big difference for this particular site, given how the topography is and the fact that if you start moving any further west, you encroach on the the stream and the riparian edge. So it was, the site is constrained. And while it's in here for removals, I do know after speaking with the applicant, they do have every intent to try and save those trees. But unfortunately, based on that final septic design, they want to be conservative and recognize that they might have to install that leach field further to the east than than they had originally hoped to.
Okay, well, that brings up my second question. Then if the house is where it needs to be, and that's the reason that the oak trees have to come out. The leach field that we've shown here, there is a primary leach field, and then there is a secondary location to be used at a later date in the future, should the primary leach field not no longer perk? Is that correct?
I don't have the specific details to that particular question. I'm I'm not the expert on the OWTS design. So I don't know how they've designed it from a primary versus secondary. Unfortunately, I can't answer that question.
And 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 I would tell you that unlike some other areas of the city in which we have a requirement for 200% of the area set aside for for affluent disposal. Here, you always have the option to actually remove and replace an old system. So that is an option or to move to a more obviously more expensive composting system for materials. So this is a fairly traditional tier one system. But it does not preclude replacement at a future time with an alternative system.
So no, if I could be clear in on sheet A dash 1.2, and it's in the presentation as well, it's just the text is too small to read. It shows that the leach field, that's the two stripes that are closest to the house make up the future leach field and the two stripes that are furthest to the east make up the active leach field.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, I was confusing that with with your question with what Maureen was was talking about in Old Spang, for example, in that overlay zone. You have to provide a system twice the size of what's otherwise required. Here, they're not in Old Spang, so they don't. So I do see what you're talking about on A 1.2.
So again, the the purpose of the future leach field is in case the first one doesn't perk well enough, you have an alternative place to start disposing the the affluent. And my thought was simply that if the active leach field was the one next to the house and the future leach field was the one at the property line, then the oak trees don't need to come out now. They could come out at some point in the future when it was necessary. And I don't know if that thought has been discussed or would even be considered by the applicant. Would save a lot of heartache and leave some of our our natural oaks where they are.
I'd like to weigh on that as well. There are some technologies available now that could augment the purpose of a leach field in the in the first place. And there are a number of interesting technological developments going on. And I would just encourage everybody that's involved with this project to take a look. I can give some references on that clean water technologies as an example, might be a worthy consideration. And it's a local person with a terrific invention. But another issue and some of those things that occur as we're talking about this. It's unfortunate that we can't actually figure out a way to continue the dialogue to help the process along for everybody and all the concerns that each of us has expressed. An example would be we have a dearth of Quercus lobata reproduction in the Santa Monica Mountains. That's the valley oak trees and they're deciduous and they're lovely and fantastic. And I can tell you that the Quercus agrofolia or the coast live oak is evergreen and highly fire resistant, relatively speaking. And those things could be factored into the equation that you just raised, which is save the ones we got until we absolutely have to change and then do the best job we can to replace and deal with the aesthetics and the screening and all the other stuff for the scenic corridor based upon what we know about oak trees and other trees for that matter that are potentially regenerative to the territory we're talking about.
I guess then the the question in that in this particular case is, is if there's a condition that the commission would want to have added to the resolution. Recognizing these these issues, I don't have an answer as to whether or not by calling it future versus active, if they have to still do some sort of construction to get that ready for a leach field. I I just, I'm not sure what that process entails.
Well, I mean, Michael, let me just ask Matt, you know, is there something we can do to either direct or leave the option open? Because this is going to be a project that's going to take six months to a year to ultimately determine what does go in place and how it does function and what needs to be displaced or replaced or regenerated. What are the mechanisms that are available to us and the owners to be able to address the comments we've brought up tonight?
I would suggest that rather than conditioning the switch, because it sounds like we don't have enough information tonight to be able to know whether we're not simply switching active and whether we're not simply switching active and future leach fields works with the other constraints on a septic system that you consider approving the project as proposed. If you find the other terms, the conditions and standards can be met. And with the the active leach field on the eastern edge, with the further direction that staff and the applicant evaluate whether they can be switched. And if so, then it would reduce the oak tree removals, the mitigation condition would get adjusted accordingly. And you would have already considered and approved the most impactful version. If you were to alternatively condition the switch and then improve the least impactful version, it would mean that if the decision by the engineers evaluating the question on the leach field is that it has to go back to the ways proposed in the plans, then it would have to return for further approval for the oak tree permit. So it's a worthy suggestion, but I would I would, in other words, I would suggest approving it with the most impactful if you make the findings that that's approvable and then direct the applicant and staff to look at switching it so that the least impactful approach could could be implemented on the ground. Mindful that it does take some time before building and safety takes a look at the exact details of the septic system. With that, I also note that the public hearing is still open and I've seen Mr. Benz, who I believe is the further neighbor to the south, raised his hand. It may be reasonable to take that comment for the appropriate time.
That'd be good. And I would just say that the what you just suggested could apply to the oak trees and the specimens for that matter that might be used now or in the future as either replacement or mitigation as if if it's necessary. I actually think that Peter's ideas, the kind of thing that we hope that you discover and then do the best to make sure we get the best outcomes, even if you have to direct staff and or the applicant to consider these prospects without necessarily having the legal obligation to do so. It's it's just a good design sense. And I always appreciate Peter, your suggestions on how to deal with design alternatives when it comes to dealing with difficult issues that might be resolved once, but come back and haunt us in some way or another because we didn't do one thing or another.
Yes, Michael.
So on this issue, though, I do want to point out what I mentioned earlier because I think it negates what you're saying. If you look at the last page in that packet, which is G two of two, you will see that the turnaround, the fire department turnaround area covers part of the future leach field. So they have to take that into account, too. It's not just switching them. They have to redesign it.
Again, is that something that can be directed that staff and the applicant? You know, work to resolve because you've brought the subject up and it makes sense. And we're not totally sure that there isn't a solution at this moment, but we can find a good solution that allows everybody to move forward in a safe and effective and economical way. Maureen.
And again, I would tell you that this said detail of the final design that must be worked out during the building plant check process. It's not something that I would invite this commission to do at this moment, but recognize that the project cannot be permitted without the turnaround by the fire department and the leach field. And to the extent that that leach field has to be adjusted their virtue of final soils report grading conditions, you name it, they could find a giant rock underneath there and the thing has to work around it. That will happen during that building permit process.
Well, and that's that's then to Matt's point, and that is that there are conditions under which it would come back to the commission as well.
Well, no, the
Emphasize that point.
Matt's point is that the the resolution is anticipating the worst case scenario because we're still we don't have some of these final details. We never, we won't have these final details until a project is approved and goes through the precise grading plan check and and final OWTS plant check. So recognizing that these precise details are not yet fleshed out. The resolution addresses that by recognizing the the need to remove those four trees as a effectively a worst case scenario.
It's not permission. It's a it's a fact that you have to have to deal with. Yes, Peter and then John.
So as the guy who brought this up, I just want to say, first of all, I do like Matt's recommendation. I I didn't mean to cause a big stink here, but I do see an opportunity to save some oak trees, at least for a few years. And and in response to Michael's comment, you have to understand that the leach field they show is both the future and the active leach field that's currently on the plan. It doesn't matter which one you use first, assuming that they both perk and don't have big rocks underneath them as as Maureen has mentioned to us. So again, I think it's a good suggestion. I'd like to just leave it at that. I don't think we need to make a requirement out of it. And it was just an observation on on how we could keep some oak trees around a little longer.
Well, I do want to say.
It will be approval. So. Michael, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I do want to say the oak trees. That wasn't the point. It's just that you can't just flip it because you got the then the problem with the turnaround. They have to redesign a little bit, but it's something you can't just make.
Flip it, Michael. What they would do is take the stripes that are closest to the house and make that the active leach field and.
But that's not possible. That's not possible because the southern part of it is covered by the turnaround. And you can't have a driveway over a leach field. You can't build on top of a leach field. Yeah. Well, that's another thing. The plans keep, you know, changing as as Maureen said.
But guys, you know, it it seems to me that that Matt's suggestion provides a high level eventuality, a high level direction without getting into the weeds of
Right.
What what building is safety is going to be there for and what the fire department is going to be there for and what this is not what we should be dealing with. But Matt's, you know, on on an on an a high level, we can give some general direction of what we're looking for. But that's it, you know, getting into all the details of it. That's not our place here.
We do have to leave that to the professionals. You're right. John, you had a comment or question?
Just very briefly, I think this could be resolved with a condition that says removal of trees one, seven, three, three, eight, nine and three, three, nine, oh shall take place as when and as necessary for the installation of the appropriate leach field.
And turnaround.
Well, just, you know, if if they never have to put the leach field where the oak trees are, then the oak trees stay forever.
Right.
If they don't have to do it for five years, then they don't do it for five years.
Maureen.
But wait a minute. I'm happy with Matt's solution. That's fine, too.
The only the only thing I would bring to the attention of this commission is that a leach field of this type, it's has lifespan somewhere between twenty and thirty years and that period of time, an oak tree can get to a heritage size. So there is a time limitation to the use of this provision. And and I would tell you that you don't want to let that hang out there forever. So.
Good point.
Well, and I don't think we are at this point, but there are some technical and engineering and practicalities that, you know, can be resolved at the professional level, too. I have every confidence that.
Knowledge Maureen's point and withdraw my suggestion.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments that we need to consider before I ask if there is a motion afoot?
I haven't closed the hearing yet, and that's why I'm asking the question. But Matt, what else do you have in mind?
Well, I was going to suggest you might want to hear from Mr. Benz, who has also desired to speak, and we have not closed the hearing yet.
Then public hearing is still open and Judy, does Mr. Ben still have his hand up?
He does. If you can just admit yourself, you'll be able to speak.
And Mr. Benson.
I think I have. Can you hear?
Yes, but if you give us your name and your city of residence, please.
Right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Dale Benz. We we live on the we're adjacent neighbor across from Mr. Alliance on the same flag lot Dry Canyon Coal Creek, Calabasas. Comments can be brief. I submitted the the particular comment about the driveway maintenance agreement because I was not aware whether Mr. Fernandez was aware of it at all or not, or the existing lot owner or wherever it or not. And I just wanted to indicate that the reason that it's expired is because we've been awaiting something to occur on that fourth lot. The common driveway is in quite ill repair at the present time. And obviously, for good logical reasons, we have not wanted to repair that until the construction, if at all, on this house was completed and construction vehicles to come and so forth, had their opportunity to break it up further. So we are very anxious to have an effective new agreement recognized by all the parties to pay their prorata share of the of the maintenance of the driveway, which is not a small item, given the the length of the concrete involved there. So I'm fine with what the planning commission is saying about it's a private agreement and we need to work on that. It's just a matter of making Mr. Fernandez know, be be aware of that to work with us. The agreement, by the way, does apply to lot owners. Whether there's a house there or not is 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 a moot point. The existing agreement is divisible by four in terms of the prorata share based upon ownership of the lot. The fact that it's a vacant lot, we could go ahead and improve that driveway today and 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 still, you know, ask that one quarter of it be paid by the owner of the lot that that we've been discussing. The other thing that I would comment on is that I'm familiar with this and and the use of the agreement because we had to enforce it some years ago when we converted the existing common driveway from asphalt to concrete. When we the the original owners here moved, it was all a lengthy asphalt driveway. And that's why I made the point about the asphalt driveway proposed on the new home is that the years of sun and traffic heavy vehicles, construction and otherwise propane tank trucks, so on and so forth, and the heat out here in the valley getting only worse make asphalt an extremely ineffective use for driveways. And I would say for most roads, if you look at them, too, there were potholes and and the asphalt got soft, the the curbing disappeared and it was a mess. So we have we've gone, we went, we went to concrete and got everybody to offer their prorata share and that and that worked fine. But now that concrete driveway now probably twenty years old is all cracked up and needs to be redone. So the the purpose of that is just to make the statement regarding asphalt and the fact that there is this agreement and we look forward to working out the the specifics of that maintenance agreement with all four parcel owners. Thank you.
I give you your comments. Judy, do we have anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak?
I'm looking for hands. Just give it one moment, please. And I don't see any other hands.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And thank everybody for their participation and comments and ideas. It's all very helpful. And sometimes you have to invent your way along the along the way, and I appreciate that as we are dealing with this. I have a a couple of comments that I wanted to make. This area, you know, whole north end of, you know, the canyon that is Dry Canyon Coal Creek is a very significant habitat and riparian area and drainage course and stream course. I think it is ephemeral, so it's not a blue line stream and I'm a subject to Army Corps of Engineers or anybody else. You know, messing in the sandbox here, but it's important to recognize that a lot of work has gone on with the city of Calabasas and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, MRCA, and all the other volunteer groups that like to deal with natural surroundings. And we started our, you know, our first scenic quarter ordinance in on April fifth of nineteen ninety one, and here we are still dealing with the awareness of and the preservation of those things and this home and this plan are appreciative because of our staff and our commissioners of all the things that are a part of that. So I know that everybody is highly sensitive to that, and I commend them for it. So bringing up things about oak trees or drainage or even curb heights for runoff and sanitation that comes from all those things, it's all extremely helpful to have the these discussions on a regular basis. But I don't see that there's anything else that we need to deal with other than acknowledging, you know, the good ideas and the the constraints that we all know have to be done. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, can I have a motion on this resolution?
I'll make a motion, motion to approve PC resolution number twenty twenty dash seven oh four with the changes that Valdez in page four condition or paragraph five will be changed to Dry Canyon Coal Creek. And also with the change that condition twenty two on page eleven will be stricken and the following conditions will be renumbered as appropriate.
Is there a second to that motion?
I would add you you had also mentioned rephrasing condition number twenty one to read for the last sentence would read the planter shall include screening vegetation period. The vegetation shall remain in good condition at all times.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
Right. I was going to bring that up as well, but thank you, Michael. Are there any other other issues that need to be included in the resolution? So the motion is, as you heard from John and corrected with with the additional change to twenty one and the renumbering of the resolution items. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Michael. Is there a second?
I believe Wendy's second.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to speak a little bit about the the lot itself. I mean, it it looks like this Ron Pearlstein, whose name is on the parcel map, created four parcels and then probably realized he couldn't build on one of them, which is parcel three. Even had trouble on parcel two. There's you can only build on a small part of it. Parcel three seems to be unbuildable. So he laid, somebody came in later and divided three and four. And as the as one of the surveyors said, the legal description was a little ambiguous. It's a little lazy, actually, because they said the that line that you mentioned, Michael, goes to the most westerly part of parcel four, but it should have said approximately X number of feet to the most westerly line of parcel four, and then you would know right away that it's, you know, what it was. It's, I think it's accurate. It's just it's it's just a little ambiguous, as the surveyor said. As far as the my problem is with the whether this is compatible in design and appearance. The scenic corridor, you know, item number four on page four. I think the ARP, the architectural review panel comments were great and they've improved it greatly. But I still think in the end, this looks more industrial or residential, I'm sorry, industrial or commercial than residential. And my suggestion to the applicant would be to look at the only other modern home I could find anywhere near here, which is about a mile and a half away at two, four, six, four, one Dry Canyon Coal Creek. It's a modern home, but it's far more compatible in in design and appearance. Part of the reason is, and I don't know what your intention is, but you have this sort of I think the roof is too large or that it's too, it's like overbearing and it makes it look more industrial. And also it doesn't have any pitch to the roof. And all the other roofs in this area, everywhere, they all they all have a pitch. This is the only one with a flat roof. It's completely different from any other home in the area, which makes it look, as I said, more, you know, it makes it look like a cool industrial building, really cool, but it doesn't make it look like it's compatible. So we'll take a look at that home. Also, that home doesn't have, I think if you had darker colors on the bottom and maybe lighter on the top as far as that parapet. I think the parapet is part of the problem. That that other home has a darker brown color instead of this orange. That that other home has a darker brown color instead of this orangish brown ash. That might help, but. If you, the other choice is to do what the city council required of that home on Park Vicenti that. Peter had such a, you know, Peter had a problem with. The city council solved that by requiring a twenty foot high hedge of fern. Fern pine, potocarpus. And if if there was a hedge around this on the, let's see, west, south and east side, well, all sides, actually. Then then I wouldn't have a problem with it so that if none of the neighbors had to see it. And you couldn't see it from my home because it's the flat roof that's the and the style there. They're just not compatible to me. The other problem I have is with the asphalt, this pervious asphalt, pervious asphalt. Well, forget pervious asphalt. That won't last a season. You can go look at the commons. So any plan for pervious asphalt, I think that's a huge mistake. Not to mention, I don't think it's a good idea to have water flowing into that that ephemeral stream if possible. But even the concrete is broken up, as Mr. Ben said, and you can see that. On one of the, one of your slides, but I saw it in person. If you look at sheet LF dash three photo ten, you can see that it's broken up. Especially where the concrete goes into the stream and and crosses it, you know, go, it's completely broken up. That that if you put in an asphalt driveway, it just won't last, I mean, maybe a year. And then and then it's going to break up and and pollution is going to go into the stream. So. If you could, if you could screen it or if you, and if you put in concrete, I would support it otherwise. I can't because I don't think it's compatible and. Compatible at all in design or in appearance.
Michael, is there, not Michael Harrison, but Michael Klein, is there a? Slope to the roof of the of the home as designed? Is is there? An inch or two of fall from the front to the back or the north to the south or anything like that?
It is a, it's a flat roof, but it does have appropriate, I mean, very minimal sloping to accommodate water drainage. And in fact, I had mentioned it earlier, but the original design was a completely flat roof. From one end of the structure to the other, and that was a point and an issue that that the ARP. Brought up and requested for it to be redesigned, and so they added some features to varying the roof height. So it's not just one flat roof from one end of the structure to the next.
So there is a runoff from the roof feature to the design.
Yes, there is.
Any other discussion on the motion? Peter, Wendy, John? Yes, Peter.
I'll just throw a couple of comments out. I I also am not a fan of the modern design, but I don't see anything in our. Findings that would require it. I am very excited to see a project that is not in the ninety-fifth percentile with regard to FAR and scale. And especially here in our scenic quarter, I think that's, that goes a long way in my book towards, you know, being compatible with the neighborhood and and a single story and. You know, the compliance with the ARP's recommendations on the roof line. I I think the applicant has. Made the efforts to be compatible with the scenic quarter, even though personally I wouldn't go for the the modern design. My comments on the leach field and the oak trees was simply because as we make an oak tree permit, we have to have the finding that it's a. Warranted to enable reasonable and conforming use of the subject property. And and I think with Maureen's comment. The fact that if we waited till a later date, we would have an even bigger oak tree to contend with and. That just doesn't make sense to me. So. With that, I can withdraw that suggestion and and make the finding for an oak tree permit here. So. I see no reason for this project not to move forward.
Wendy or John, anything else? Okay, if there's no further discussion, let's vote on the resolution. Again, I'll ask you to raise your hand because it's a quicker and easier way to count noses here. So all those in favor of resolution to twenty twenty dash seven oh three as modified, seven oh four, sorry, modified, please raise your hand. And those opposed. So it's four to one. The motion is approved. And the project is approved with all the discussion and direction and conditions and everything else that we've talked about. And. As we always say, we always reserve the right to improve. So if there are some things that occur that allow you to help the staff. And the applicant to make this a better project for everybody concerned, please make your thoughts known. And I know that this is recorded and that our staff always looks at these materials as we're going along. So thank you all for your discussion on this. You know, I didn't do Matt, I didn't close the public hearing. So.
I believe that was closed at the relevant point, and I'll just note also for the record that the vote was the oral record. Vote was four to one to approve the project with the modified resolution with Commissioner Harrison opposed.
Okay. Anything else we need to do on this item?
No, this item is is approved unless someone appeals to the council. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is. Have to find it buried in all these different programs. So we're on to item number four, Director's Report.
Thank you. I only have one item for announcement this evening, which is a week from today, October fifteenth. Will be the planning commission's workshop on the housing element. So this has been noticed by postcard, by Acorn, by our our department. Communications Department in the city, and I encourage. All members of the public to join us that evening. It's easy. It's virtual. It's Zoom and. This is among the most important aspects. Where the input from the community is so welcome. And I want to thank all who did attend the planning commission or excuse me, the public workshop that was held. On the thirtieth of September. And the feedback that we received there, which we will now inform the planning commission of. So. Finally, October fifteenth, six P M, the planning commission workshop on housing element. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
And Maureen, to tune into the Zoom meeting, folks should go to the website to look at the details.
That's correct. You go to the city's website. You click government, the government tab. The government tab will give you a drop down menu on the far left side, find calendar, find the date. For the planning commission on the fifteenth, when you open that link to the planning commission, you can click right there and join the meeting.
Thank you very much. And are there any other comments or reports from the commissioners themselves? Yes, Peter.
Just a question, if we could, we've had some public correspondence and now a comment on the Rondell project. Is there? A need for us to get just an update on that project and its changes since it's came before the commission?
I would suggest that the staff can provide a copy of the final design, but I wanted to note one point that I think has been a little bit lost in some of the public commentary. Which is that the revised design of the Rondell Hotel project was reviewed and approved at a public meeting, namely the Architectural Review Panel meeting of. December twenty-second, twenty seventeen, which was provided, a notice was provided in the usual fashion. For an ARP meeting, and that was consistent with the terms of the council approved development agreement that allowed for the design to be adjusted. Subject to ARP review and approval, and if ARP found it necessary, planning commission review and approval. So I would suggest not a formal agenda item for the planning question to consider, but certainly staff can send. The commission and is also available, I think, on the website for the city, the final approved design.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Is there a second? Wendy's second and hearing no objections were adjourned. I thank you all for your participation and ideas and. Continuing service to the community of Calabasas. Thank you all.